Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Here.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Councilmember Cutrone, can you take yourself off mute? No.
Okay, now I can. Now that the clerk has allowed me graciously to unmute myself. I am present.
Okay, well, thank you. Next.
Councilmember Hellman.
I'm here.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Here. Before we do an approval of the agenda, I want to make a suggestion that we have a lot of folks here, I believe, on the wall property. So I'm going to suggest that we move item two to be item one. And could I get a motion for that?
I move that we...
Okay. Okay, who?
Second.
Okay, so who was first?
Cutrone.
It was Councilmember Cutrone and then Councilmember Hellman was second. Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, and with that, do we need an approval of the agenda as modified?
Yes, we do.
Could I get a motion to do that?
So moved.
And a second?
Go ahead.
Yes, second.
Okay, so we have Vice Mayor Blash and then Councilmember Cutrone. I mean, I'm sorry, Ackerman. And could you please do a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
You need to unmute him. We can't...
He's unmuted.
Okay, we need... He's saying no. We can't take his votes with the sun.
Yes. Yeah, I'll just like leave myself off mute.
Okay, and be quiet in the background. Okay, great. Next one?
Vice Mayor Blash. Yes. Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, with that, if folks would like to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and I will just note again, Councilmember Cutrone is participating via teleconference from 317 K Street Northwest, Washington DC. And I will go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewoc people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and emerging. And going ahead and reading the meeting protocol, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and or ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in the silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting, unless the council votes to suspend this rule. And I already mentioned, there is no report out on closed session. Before we start the regular agenda with item two, I'd like to say a few words. Before we begin on item two, I would just like to say that I would appreciate if speakers would refrain from using profanity and/or disparaging people based upon race, religion, orientation, or country of origin. While I'm aware that our ability to silence these types of comments is constrained by the Brown Act and the First Amendment, I'm asking everyone to please be civil and refrain from such disparagement in your comments. What I can do, however, is disconnect anyone whose comments disrupt the orderly conduct of our meeting and/or absent appropriate findings are not under the council's subject matter jurisdiction or are not germane to the topic or matter being discussed. Should I determine an individual's comments are not within the council's subject matter jurisdiction or are disruptive to the orderly conduct of a meeting, I will be disconnecting that individual from making further comments. As well, should we have any disturbances in the room that are disruptive to the orderly conduct of the meeting, I will not hesitate to take a break and clear the room. I will ask everyone in the room and on Zoom to remember what I just said before I take public comments on agenda items or the consent calendar. So with that, we are going to start on item two. And since I wrote the staff report, am I doing... Am I doing this? I wrote the council member report. Maybe we could have our council, Janet Coulson, provide kind of an overview of where we are.
Sure. The council appointed a subcommittee, Mayor Kohler and Councilmember Cutrone, to work on the potential acquisition of what is commonly referred to as the wall property. It's approximately 100 acre undeveloped piece of property in Fairfax. And to work with the Marin Open Space Trust, MOST, on potentially acquiring that property. And MOST has entered into a purchase agreement with the owners. And we have before us tonight a memorandum of understanding between the town and MOST detailing how, if sufficient funds are raised and put into escrow, both for acquisition as well as stewardship funds for the future. The town will be accepting an assignment of that purchase agreement from MOST and purchasing the wall property for open space purposes, as detailed in the council memo.
Okay, and I just want to add, this item is consideration and approval of memorandum of understanding between the town of Fairfax and the Marin Open Space Trust, MOST, regarding the acquisition of the wall property. And also to call to your attention, the acquisition purposes are for the protection, restoration, and enhancement of natural resources, wildlife habitat, open space, cultural resources, and compatible public access. And those purposes were agreed to based on discussions with MOST, the state coastal conservancy, who is considering us for a grant, as well as the county and others, to make sure that we're clear what the purpose of the acquisition is. So with that, I will ask my fellow council members if you have any questions of staff or potentially of me or Councilmember Cutrone, who are on the subcommittee. Councilmember Hellman.
No, I have no question.
Okay, anyone? Councilmember Cutrone, do you have any questions?
Not for myself. I guess the only thing, maybe just for the public before public comment, is Janet, can you confirm for folks who may be in the room but haven't read the staff report or are on Zoom and haven't checked that out? So this MOU isn't necessarily the final binding agreement, but it puts forward a plan of action, if you will, where MOST would need to raise the full acquisition cost, 2.3 million, and the additional $500,000 for maintenance, restoration, in order for this MOU to lead to that next step of formal acquisition. Is that...
Well, not exactly. There is no next step necessarily, other than all of the monies being placed in escrow.
Yes, that next step, yeah.
Yes, and so all of the monies, all of them, acquisition plus stewardship funds must be in escrow. If they do, if they are placed in escrow, then this MOU says that the town will proceed with the assignment, accepting the assignment of the purchase agreement and purchase the property with the funds that are in escrow. So no town funds will be added to that. It's all funds that MOST and other agencies perhaps will place in escrow, and the town will accept the purchase of the property with those funds.
And I just want to add, this is honor before October 29th, 2024, and there is one slight revision in that the town is using, and it's a third item on our agenda, 100,000 of Measure A funds toward the acquisition of the property. So that's the one piece that we would also deposit into the escrow account.
Yes, there are no general fund monies going.
Correct. Thank you. All right, with that...
Can I ask one more, Madam Mayor? Just one...
Yes, of course.
Clarification for the public on this, the escrow piece. So Janet, is there a point in time between this meeting and that deadline, the end of October, where the public or the council at a public meeting like this would receive confirmation that all of the monies identified within this MOU have been placed in escrow and that the town is proceeding?
I just want to respond, is the date that the money would go into the escrow is honor before October 29th? So there should be no time in between. But Janet, did you want to speak to that?
Well, there's no public meeting for purposes of making another decision. This is the decision, and the town council, of course, is free to announce that at a public meeting, that all the monies have been placed in escrow and they are proceeding. But this agreement is, the only condition is that all the monies be in escrow, and then the town will accept the assignment and purchase the property.
Great. I just want to capture that. I'm sure, you know, all things in a perfect world, that there would be a strong comm strategy from MOST in partnership with the town and county parks, et cetera, et cetera. But I just wanted to capture for the minutes and for the record that, you know, I would recommend that we formally announce any development at a public notice council meeting, just so folks aren't left wondering if it ended up happening or what happened, because this would be the final meeting where an action would take place. But just wanted to capture that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Blash, did you have a question?
Yeah, so any agreements about trail maintenance or maintenance of the property, this is not what we're deciding tonight.
That's correct.
Right, because I know that we have dedicated other funds towards maintenance, but that's not what's before us here. Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, I will open it up to public comment. Deputy Clerk Foster, do you have a number of hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom right now.
Okay, so with that, we're going to go with two minutes each. We have to move on to our budget after this. So Michelle, would you like to step up to the podium? And if you feel comfortable doing so, your name and address.
Michelle Simonson, and I'm no longer a Fairfaxian, but I'm in Forest Knolls now. But I've been following this and showing up at meetings and hiking that land for many, many years. And I am thrilled that we are at this point, that it's looking so hopeful. And I encourage anybody who might have any influence on this to make it happen, because it's a beautiful piece of land and so many wonderful species of plants and animals up there, and so many humans that love going up there. I go up there all the time. I've brought generations of kids up there. And so anyway, thank you so much. Make it happen.
Thank you, Michelle. Sorry you've left us, but glad you're close by. Jack, and I want to thank Jack also for your special efforts.
Thank you. My name is Jack Jenkins. I'm the vice chair of the Fairfax Open Space Committee, and I've been on the Open Space Committee, I can never remember exactly how long unless Michael Ardito is here to remind me, but it's around 14 years. And ever since I started on the committee, acquiring the wall property has been the gold standard. It's been the, for many, many years, impossible dream. And I am equally as thrilled that we are at this point of making a major decision. I understand there's still work to be done. I know the Open Space Committee is committed to that work, and I know many people in the community are likewise committed. So of course, I am recommending and hoping that the town council will support the community's desires in this and approve this agreement. And I also want to thank, you know, people who have been working very hard at this, particularly most recently, and that would include Mayor Kohler and Council Representative Cutrone, and of course, MOST, and in particular, Bill Long and Jonathan Braun, who have been doing a tremendous job raising funds, working with outside organizations to try to get this accomplished. So thank you to all of you, and I'm looking forward to this coming to a happy conclusion.
Thank you. And at one point, we'll hope that Bill Long will stand in line and speak. Okay, it looks like we have Chris Cook.
Hi, everyone. Thank you. Yeah, Chris Cook from 306 Sinek in Fairfax, local Fairfax resident, and obviously I support saving the wall property. I just really want to point out the highlighted statement that you as well pointed out, Barbara, is "The purposes of the acquisition are for protection, restoration, and enhancement of natural resources, wildlife habitat, open space, cultural resources, and compatible public access." And I want to just really hammer down on that last part and not forget about it, because that's why we're trying to save it, is so that we can all access it, and to not forget about that in the purpose of saving this property. Because it says there's no fiscal impact, but we all know in the long run, we will have to maintain this property. We will have to, you know, do things to pay for it as a town, which many of us obviously support. But I just want to really focus on the fact that we're all trying to save this property for our town's access and for people's access, not for more, you know, grassland, which we have and is great. But just so that we're all aware that that's why we want to save it, is for us to access it. And thank you, guys, for all doing everything you have, and everyone here who has done...
Thank you, Chris. And just to clarify, there's no fiscal impact at this time. Thank you very much.
Also want to add that we, as a community, can add things to help maintain it that doesn't cost to the town.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that at a later date. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker, please.
I'm Myron Walters. I live on the edge of the wall property up in Marin Oaks. And I want to thank you guys. I've been attending open space meetings since 2005, pushing for the purchase of this property. And it's been a long haul, and I really want to appreciate your chance for making it happen, or at least you're a prime motivator for it. And I want to appreciate the town council for stepping up and actually doing it, getting us this far. So I'm in favor of it, and I thank you all.
Thank you. Next figure, please, Ray.
I'm Ray Morris. I'm a forester and fire ecologist. And as you all know, I serve as the town's arborist. And in the recent development proposal, 400, I want you to know, and anybody who's interested in investing for the town to have this property, is that the native forest there is surprisingly exceptional. The dominant species is coast live oak. Second in line is madrone. And out of 449, not all trees were assessed, but out of 449 trees assessed for species, size, and condition, both health condition and structural condition, only six trees were found to be unacceptably diseased or stability compromised. That is totally exceptional in Marin County. And it's an amazing forest. And because of that, the native forest and, of course, the property itself should be a high priority for being maintained in public ownership.
Thank you, Ray, and thanks for that added information that we didn't have. Appreciate it. Okay, we have Bill Long, the chair of the Marin Open Space Trust, and thank you for coming. Thank you for all your efforts. Okay, you're on.
Okay, well, thank you. Yeah, MOST was formed 15 years ago. And I think the first project that anyone talked to us about was the wall property. We met with a lady who was your mayor, I believe. She was on the council in any case, and took a couple of hikes around the property. It was owned by Dr. Wall or his family at that point, and it just didn't look like there was a way ahead. We were just getting started. But we continued to sort of stay on top of it. And we came to several of the town's open space committee meetings and heard more about the desire to secure that property, because it was already being readily used, widely used by the residents and enjoyed. And they didn't want to see it locked up or turned into a real estate development that nobody could access except the residents. So last year, about this time, when we heard that the bankruptcy proceeding was taking place, it looked like an opportunity. Your open space committee encouraged us to get in on it and do what we could. So once the lender took back the property in the bankruptcy proceeding, we had some to negotiate with. And we did, and we secured an agreement, a contract, in November, which gives us a year to raise the money and purchase the property and then donate it to the town. And part of that process involved, of course, working out the terms, the MOU that's in front of you tonight. That still leaves work to do. After you agree to this, and we hope you do, we have to continue fundraising. We have some very promising prospects, generous pledges and donations. And just yesterday, we got some wonderful news. We had hoped for a grant from the California State Coastal Conservancy, but when the state's financial problems came to light, it looked like all new projects from the conservancy were going to be put on hold. And so we sort of wiped that off our list and just said, well, we're going to have to do that much more fundraising. Well, yesterday, we heard that our project, your project, is back on the list, and that will result in, if it's approved by their board in June, a half a million dollar grant towards the project. So with what we have in the way of donations and pledges and indications, solid indications of support, including your own commitment of $100,000, we are getting within shooting distance of our overall goal, which is 2.85 million now. That includes money to go to the seller, 2.3 million, plus 500,000 to the town and some expenses that we'll have. So with your positive reaction tonight that we're hoping for, we are off and running into the next phase, but we're highly optimistic about the outcome. And I want to thank all of you that I worked with, your attorney, your subcommittee, the open space committee, who've been so active on this project. It's quite unbelievable, just their goodwill and spirit to get this over the finish line. So thank you. We're looking forward to a successful conclusion at the end of October or sooner, if the funds are there. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. And just want to thank the community who, Bill has told me, and Bill calls me all the time, which is wonderful, but Bill has told me that he has never seen this level of community support for all the projects they've worked on for 15 years. So that says a lot. Next speaker, it looks like we have John Reed.
Hello, members of the council, and I'm very pleased to be here to encourage you to enter this memorandum of understanding. I would, I guess, on that last note that was going to be the point that I was going to make, is that this is one of the things that people all throughout Fairfax can pretty much agree on. There's a lot of support for keeping the wall properties open space. I mean, it's technically not open space now, but it would be wonderful to do that in perpetuity. It's right on the ridge line, can be seen from all over town, downtown. And in fact, the houses up above the wall property is part of what inspired Fairfax's ridge line ordinance and the fact that a lot of the wall property has ridge line there. It's very difficult to develop except right on the ridge line, which of course is problematical. And a lot of people care about the way it looks and the way it influences our town. So as a way to bring people together around something positive, I think that's very good. And it's also, you know, a wonderful gem that's part of our town. So I would highly encourage you to enter in this agreement. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Christine, I just got a message from Susan Pascal-Buran that there's something with the Zoom link. I think it's the PDF Zoom link that's not, that's problematic versus...
I'll send her an email.
Okay, but I think it's, she's saying that people are telling her that. So it may be more, so I don't know if there's some way to post something on...
There was an issue with the link, but I updated it before the meeting.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, so for folks who are trying to watch on Zoom, and I don't know if you can hear me, you need to do a refresh, which is usually F5, so you get the new Zoom link. All right. Thank you, Christine. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. Did we miss open time? Was there open time?
There is no open time on a special meeting.
Okay. So speaking to this specifically, then, I think we're all in favor of making this happen. The only question is how, and have any details not been paid attention to that should be paid attention to? I'm in favor of doing this. I'm in favor of doing it with the i's dotted and the t's crossed in a fiscally responsible manner in a town that is in debt and running a deficit. I would suggest, before anything gets finalized, that is there a public presentation about the landslide risk that the public gets to weigh in and is knowledgeable about what kind of risk? Because I heard only this evening that one amongst many residents nearby previously was not able to occupy their home for three years when there was a landslide in the area. That's a real concern about what will happen to the town's liability and what might happen to the town's insurance, where Sausalito recently lost their insurance and their costs are going way up. The other thing that is a major concern that I think needs to be publicly addressed before you move forward, so the public can weigh in on this, is whether or not there will be a deed restriction on this property. Because as Frank Agar has previously said, as other speakers have previously said, there is property that was acquired with the good intentions of being open space on Forest Avenue, which the town is now seeking to develop in partnership with nonprofits. I would like a guarantee that this property will not be developed. Thank you.
Thank you. And to clarify, we are not in a deficit. And so other speakers in the room? I see none. John, would you mind turning the mic off? And are there any people on Zoom?
There are three speakers on Zoom.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started.
The first speaker is Brenna, followed by Jane. Brenna, you are unmuted.
Hi, everyone. Brenna Gubbins, Miranda Drive. I just want to say thank you so much for your consideration tonight. I just want to say thank you so much for your consideration tonight about the wall property and a huge thank you to everyone who has made such a massive effort to save it. It's a beautiful piece of property and it needs to remain as it is, a vibrant wildlife corridor and a beautiful place for all to enjoy. Just thank you to everyone who has put in such a great effort. Thanks.
Thank you, Brenna. Next speaker, please. Jane Richardson-Mack.
Jane? Yes, the next speaker is Jane. Jane, you are unmuted, followed by Lynn.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to speak and thank you all who have had anything to do with making this dream come true. It's, I've lived here 40 years and it's that long that this property has been dreamed about. It was thought to be impossible. It was the impossible dream that's becoming possible. If you can make this happen, you will guarantee your halos forevermore for posterity, for the children who haven't even been born yet. It's just absolutely spectacular happening. Thank you, thank you, thank you, everybody. Thank you, open space. Thank you, Ray, for speaking up with invaluable information. I would also like to stress that we, the public, I think, would like to have a guarantee that there will be no development whatsoever on any one square inch of the property, whether it be for affordable housing or anything, any noble effort whatsoever. No, nothing, absolutely nothing. Let it remain pristine as it was, as it will be, as it should be. And just thank you. I really am amazed and delighted and so proud that this has come to be and that we have your support from the town council. We don't all very often agree on everything, but I think this is one thing that just about everybody can agree on. So thank you. Let's go forward, but make sure we keep it open space, no building, none, nothing, nada, nunca. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Lynn, followed by Sierra Tunafish. Lynn, you are unmuted.
Good evening. I want to thank everybody that's tried to keep the wall property without housing on it over 60-plus years, a couple generations here in this neighborhood. And I want to say thank you to all the residents, especially people in this neighborhood that pressured Rothman from not developing there. And we wouldn't settle for anything that he had to offer. And I want to thank the residents and the community for pulling together and getting in front of that train. I also want to say that since we've been here for so long, we've seen the transition of the property. The property was in better shape 50, 30, 25 years ago than it is now. There are lots of trails, there's lots of dog waste, there's lots of bikes causing erosion. And that's something that I really want everybody, I know we'll go through those details at a later date, but that's something I want you guys to be aware of. Also, I'd like red curb, the whole top of Miranda Oaks up there, Miranda Drive at the end, because it's difficult to turn around when all the dog walkers are up there. And ultimately, it would be great to have parking by permit only in our neighborhood because of the crowds are already here. And that's how I feel about it. I've just seen the whole terrain change. It's not what it used to be, used to be able to moonwalk up there on moonwalks. And there's a lot of dog stuff and a lot of trails that have crevices from bikes and that's it. But thank you very, very much for saving this for future generations. We really appreciate the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Sierra. Sierra, you are unmuted.
This is a great thing. It'll be really nice to see it happen. Of all the things that we humans can invest in, and there are many, and many, many problems, healthy environments and just virgin, undisturbed environments, if there is such a thing in an urban environment surrounded by, I mean, there's no big wildlife to speak of, there's not, birds come through, but the nature that we have that's left is pretty chopped up. So I second what a lot of people have said about no buildings on the property and just, it'll be really nice to see this happen. Long term, we need healthy environments and healthy, undisturbed commons and not the totally humanized planet that we have. We're just doing, kind of doing ourselves in unless we take care of all the other life forms. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Sierra. Are there's other speakers on Zoom?
There is one more speaker on Zoom and it's GPCA. You are unmuted.
Hey, sorry. This is Mimi Newton. I did not have time to change my ID on my phone. I just wanted to say thank you to everybody who has worked so hard to get to this point. And I'm sure we'll continue to work hard as we proceed, but it is so appreciated. I think I joined the open space committee in 2006 and people were talking already about this. And as, you know, others have said, it's been in the works for many decades. But just for me personally, I just, I'm so grateful that so many people have put so much time and effort and energy into this. So thanks, all of you. Over.
Thank you, Mimi. You started this with Jack and others, and I joined in 2008. So it's been a goal for a long time. I think, no more speakers on Zoom?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
It looks like we have one speaker left in the room and we're going to have to close it off because we already did people in the room. We'll take one more after that and then that's it. All right, next speaker, please.
Hey, everyone. Art Tim Schneider, St. Gabriel Drive. Thank you to all the town council members for kind of moving this forward and to the Fairfax Open Space Committee and to all the folks that have been working on this, I think probably for the past, I don't know, decade or more. I'm pretty new to Fairfax and moved here a couple of years ago. So I know there's kind of a long saga before I ever even knew what the heck the wall property is. The short thing I want to say is that since moving to St. Gabriel Drive, my wife moved here and I moved here a couple of summers ago, one of my wife's favorite things to do is to, you know, wake up at seven in the morning and hike with one of our neighbors, Cara, up to the top of the ridgeline there. And it's been a really nice way for us to kind of feel welcomed into the community and kind of get a great start to the day. And I'm just really grateful that we'll continue to be able to do that. So thank you all for working on this.
Thank you and welcome to Fairfax.
Thank you.
Next speaker, and then we'll close off public comment. Rick?
Good evening. Rick Hamer, Downtown Fairfax. I just want to note while this property is an escrow, that it may appear to be a fantastic asset and open space and wildlife corridor. And I totally support that. And that's what it looks like to Fairfax. But to Sacramento, it's got a target on it. And the legislatures in Sacramento are looking for publicly owned or publicly sponsored properties without protections that make them invulnerable to the housing movements coming through the legislature. And the property that the council should consider placing covenants on the property while it is an escrow, so that they are permanently made a condition of the deed and have that reviewed by, of course, our legal counsel and such to ensure that some dark sale on the horizon coming out of Sacramento cannot change what we are so thankful to see tonight. Because there has been efforts to convert public, or sometimes they call surplus property, which is essentially underutilized property. And this, to some eyes, this would appear like that. So please, while it's an escrow, make sure that it is recorded at the transfer, that this property does not fall into that type of risk. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, the property is not in escrow. There's a purchase agreement that will end honor before October 29th. But just to clarify, it's, there's still work to be done. But just thank you very much for your comments. And I just want to read something again. First of all, and this is part of the MOU, MOST in the town have been working together to achieve a common conservation goal, the permanent protection of the property. And also to read again, "The purposes of the acquisition are for the protection, restoration and enhancement of natural resources, wildlife habitat, open space, cultural resources and compatible public access." That really means no buildings. It's not going to be developed. I think Rick's caution is something we ought to look into. So with that, I want to ask if there's any further deliberation. But when there's time for a motion, I would like Councilmember Cutrano to be able to make the motion. And I would like to, even though it's not normal, to be able to second it. But are there, is there further deliberation? Go ahead.
I just want to first thank Councilmember Cutrano and yourself, Mayor. I know how much time and energy you put into working with MOST and open space and the county. And I agree with a lot of, well, everything, everyone spoke in public comment. I do think this is something that the whole community is behind and it feels really, it's an honor and feels like a really momentous occasion, although there will be more celebrating ahead and certainly more fundraising to be done. I had a conversation with the Chair of the Fairfax Open Space Committee, which I think she's been trying to get in, who's in Bering, Pascal. And she said, you know, thank you for all your support, for, you know, what you're doing for the wall property, you and the council. And I said, well, it's really a no-brainer to support it in concept. But what is not the no-brainer, right, is the how, which is what Bill has been doing, which is what the subcommittee has been doing. I mean, a lot of work. So thank you so much. I'm really honored to be at this moment after so many years of knowing the community, like feeling the community's anxiety, particularly the Miranda Heights neighborhood. I'm just, I feel happy for our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Blash?
Okay, I just wanted to also second some of the things people have said. I first went up there when John Reed led a hike up there. And it was really eye-opening to me as a relatively new resident. I didn't know the history of it and we wandered all around and it was pretty amazing. So it seemed like it was going to be impossible at that point for the town to ever own it, which seemed really sad. So when this came up, just what, like a year or so ago, it seemed like a dream come true. Not that I don't know that there are risks and, you know, whatnot, as some community members have mentioned. But, you know, just want to point out a couple of things. First off, the amazingness that the open space committee and MOST and others have been able to raise just about enough funds to buy this in a year. That's an incredible testament to our community. And it's kind of shows what we can do when we pull together as a community. I've always liked this saying from Barney Frank that says, government is the word we use or we choose for what we can do together. And so we're playing our part. The open space committee has played its part and the residents of our community have played their part. So it's pretty amazing. I also wanted to note that I was really heartened to hear what Ray Morris had to say. You know, one of my biggest concerns about the property is just habitat and habitat restoration, making sure that the habitat there is healthy and can be and probably need some restoration in the future. So I'm happy to hear that there's an ongoing commitment from people to ensure the health of that habitat, as well as the trail access and what have you, because it's one of the reasons we're saving this property. And I did want to ask how we can guarantee that it stays as open space, but I think that's already been answered. And I think that may also be a condition of some of the funding that we're receiving, that it has to stay as open space. So I feel pretty happy about that, that it, it seems like there will be built-in measures to make sure that it remains open space. So thank you to our subcommittee. I think that your knowledge in these areas would be really hard to replace. Like this is just an amazing resource that we have in our town council that understands open space and property acquisition the way that it does, so that it can work with all of the community on this. Thank you for, to our open space committee, who's been just an amazing champion to MOST and to just the community in general for being so willing to step up for this. This has been pretty beautiful. So thank you.
Thank you. And with that, Councilmember, oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Ackerman, go ahead.
I just wanted to second all those comments and thank you, Vice Mayor Blash, for bringing up the depth of the bench that has, that has been able to pull this together. Thank you to Mayor Kohler and to Councilmember Cutrano, formerly Vice Mayor Kohler and Mayor Cutrano when this started. And I also just wanted to especially thank Bill Long and MOST and to thank our town attorney, Janet, for a lot of work that's gone into this. Talk about dotting i's and crossing t's. There have been a lot of them and I feel like it's been well-handled. So I'm certainly in favor of it. Thank you.
Just before you make the motion, I just want to say, one of the things that has come out through this process is the support of the entire council. That doesn't always happen. And I know it hasn't always happened in other communities, but even though we know there are a lot of risks and a lot of things that we're going to take on, we really, it's really been a team effort. So Councilmember Cutrano, let's hope you're not on mute.
I am not on mute. Thank you. And yeah, just a couple, like, closing remarks on my end. I mean, I'm just reflecting on, yeah, hearing how long this has been a dream and a seemingly impossible dream for the community and so many community members. And it's just a good reminder that, like, of the power of keeping dreams alive. And you never know, you know, when you plant a seed, what, when it's going to sprout and bear fruit. But the stars really aligned last year. There was no guarantee that this was ever going to be possible. But it's because of, honestly, folks on the open space committee, it's because of Susan Pascal-Barron, Chair of the Open Space Committee, and Jack Judkins, especially Jack Judkins, Vice Chair. And as people have mentioned, Bill Long and Jonathan Braun, their expertise is incredible, Kevin Knowles as well. And it's because of Mayor Kohler, your leadership and your tenacity and, you know, no detail is too small for you. And we've turned over every rock trying to figure this out because it's, the how is so important, the how really is for something as monumental as this for our community. And I also just wanted to give a big shout out to partners all over the place, but especially, you know, Supervisor Rice, Max Corden, Carl Summers, all the good folks at the county who have been for years, honestly, good counsel as we've dreamed about this. And as, you know, since I've been on the open space committee too, you know, calling them repeatedly, calling Erica Williams at Trust for Public Land, just keeping the dream alive, getting feedback, getting information from JP Rose, you know, all the different players that, you know, cared so deeply about, you know, the development of a potential deal to conserve this permanently as open space. And two final things I'll say. One, for all the folks wondering about, you know, the ability to ensure the preservation of this land for the purposes that Mayor Kohler has mentioned and that are outlined in the MOU, both, you know, the ability to acquire Measure A dollars from county parks, that would come contingent on having a deed restriction, to have any grant money come from the State Coastal Conservancy. They also require this other additional mechanism, which is called an OTD, forgive the acronym, I don't have it off the top of my head what that exactly stands for. But, you know, their councils have already looked together at these things and made sure that the different layers of and made sure that the different layers of protection could layer on top of each other to ensure that we'll have this really incredible park for future generations, for current and future generations. And then finally, to, you know, Rick Hamer's point, you know, of course, there are folks that are looking at this in Sacramento. And in part, it's because this has kind of become a regional priority for a lot of environmental groups that are looking at the, the momentum that the Open Space Committee and our community members have caused and have championed the wall property as a 30 by 30 project in Sacramento. You know, have had incredible meetings with our Assembly Member Damon Connolly, who's committed to writing a letter of support to the Coastal Conservancy. And as well as, today I was meeting with Congressman Jared Huffman about this very same thing, and him offering a letter of support to the Coastal Conservancy to make sure that we secure that $500,000 grant, which wasn't, wasn't a certainty, and it still isn't. But we're in such a good position, and people are looking at this all over the place, because it's a really good project, and because so many people care dearly about this piece of land. And, yeah, I'm honored to be working with you all and working with the community to make this possible. So with that, I am happy to, and honored to make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of Fairfax and the Marin Open Space Trust regarding the acquisition of the wall property and to authorize the mayor to sign the MOU.
And I would like to second that motion. So that is Councilmember Cutrano and Mayor Kohler. And Madam Clerk, could you do a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Hooray.
All eyes.
All right.
Thank you all for coming who came. I just want to mention Mimi Newton, who's back taking care of aging parents. And I, Mimi has been an advocate for the wall property for years and years. And one of my first experiences as a council member was hiking the wall property with Mimi Newton and with Carl Summers of the county when he first started. So it's all full circle. You know, we've all been working on this for a while. So thank you all for coming. We're going to move on to the budget. We may take a five minute break. And thank you all, and congratulations to all of us. Hi, folks. Could you all take your seats? We're going to get started. And thanks to Michael Ardito for coming. So our next, oh, we need Damian. Let's, we, we forgot about, we forgot about that little detail. We need to cross that T. So our net, wait a minute, I've lost my agenda. Okay, Damian, are we good to go? Okay. So our next item is conduct public review for fiscal year 2425, proposed operating and capital improvement budget, and provide direction to staff. And this is Town Manager Heather Abrams and Finance Director Michael Vivret. So do you want to kick it off, Town Manager?
Yes, I will be happy to kick it off. I said last year, and I'll say again this year, this is a good news budget. We are not in deficit. We have a targeted reserve, which we are maintaining very well. And we are not in debt. We are paying our expenses as we go. We do have financing instruments that we've used in the past, and those are being paid off. But that is not what was represented in an earlier comment. So I just want to make it clear that this is a good news budget and turn it over to our Finance Director to explain more.
Thank you, Heather. Tonight, we're presenting the proposed budget for the fiscal year 2425. Fiscal years run from July 1st to June of the following year. So this is.
Michael, excuse me, just, Christine, do we have this posted, or are we going to post it?
I will post it.
Okay. And apologize for the interruption, Michael. Go for it.
So this proposed budget is the second budget document that we've presented to the council. The last one was at our budget workshop earlier this month. The next one will be presented to you for the meeting next Wednesday, which will be the date that we adopt the budget. So we will have a final budget document for you for that one, which includes any changes that we make today and any other fine tuning that we happen to do. This particular budget document is slightly different than the one that we had last time. As you know, we had some budget changes that were suggested last time. We also went through and revised some of our projections based on more information that we have about what the expenses are going to be for last year, or this year, the year ending June 30. And also modifications that we've got to revenue projections. We also sat down and did the management thing and sharpened our pencils. And we reduced our expenditure projections by a slightly less than 2% and our revenue projections by slightly less than 2%. I don't like to go into a budget with stretched rubber bands that say we're going to make this amount of money. I like to have a little bit of buffer in there to be able to allow for the fact that things happen down the way that don't necessarily allow you to, to recognize the projections that you thought you'd have. So we've made the revenue projections a little bit more conservative. And at the same time, we reduced expenses for things that we thought that, that were appropriate to do. And the, the budget, all, all of the department heads sat down together and, and did this as a group rather than the budget, rather than the budget being trimmed by the Finance Director by himself. So this, this budget is starting, let's see, we should probably look up here. Go, go to the next slide. Great. So within, here's a little budget primer for those who weren't party to the budget workshop and who like to know what the source of funds and use of funds in the town are. Within the, within the Town of Fairfax, Fairfax is, is a unique entity among a lot of other unique entities. We don't have the same kind of structure that cities like Corte Madera have with large amounts of businesses, or that other ones have that have a mixture of, of the kinds of expenses and revenues that are unique to those entities. As an example, if, if a city has utilities, they're going to have a budget that looks different than what our budget has. But within our budget, we have, our biggest source of revenue is property taxes, which is about 51.4% of our budget. This year, we're projecting that our property taxes are going to be about, let's see, mostly funded by secured property taxes, which is what everybody is used to paying on their property tax bill. But we also have about eight other categories of property taxes, including the wildfire tax, storm runoff tax. The county pays us various unsecured taxes, taxes for prior periods, and other, other ones which are, are difficult to explain, but the county sends it to us anyway. But that comprises about 51.4% of our total revenues. The other large revenue sources that we've got are sales taxes. We have, we have three different sources for sales tax. One is our Bradley Burns Tax, which is the basic 1% tax that we receive when sales happen in town. And then we also have a, what's called a district tax, but it's an add-on, add-on tax that the voters passed, which is Measure C. And we also have some residual amounts that we're still receiving on the previous one, Measure D. I think it's because of audits and such.
It expired a few years.
It expired a few years ago, but they still go back on audits and say, oh, you didn't pay sales tax back then. And they'll send us, you know, updates on that. So we're still getting minor amounts on that. And then we also have our Prop 172 tax that we receive a share of from the county. It's a half cent sales tax that we get a distribution on. In any case, that's about 14% of our revenues. We also have revenues from service charges of about 6.9%. We have a Measure F that contributes money over to the General Fund, that contributes about 5% of our General Fund revenues, about other taxes and fees of about 13.9%. And then we're using our fund balance to fund about 8.7% of our sources of funds. In total, that's about 14.5 million. Our sources for funds this year are about 421,000 higher than we had last year, which is an increase of about 4.8% in total.
Is that General Fund 421,000?
This is the General Fund.
Okay, thank.
So within the General Fund, next slide, we also have use of funds. So most of the money that we receive is used for what we call public safety. Public safety includes police. It includes fire. It includes emergency disaster funding. And that's about 55% of our revenues. Town administration accounts for about 11.9% of our expenses. Development Services, which is our planning and building function, is about 9.5% of our expenses. Public Works accounts for about 9.2%. Parks and Facilities, about 4.3%. Recreation and Community Services is a little less than 2%. And then finally, our non-departmental expenses, which includes things like the town's insurance bill, amounts that we contribute over to CERBT Fund, which funds post-employee benefits. It accounts for a whole number of amounts that we pay to the county for animal services. All those sorts of things are detailed in our Department 715. And that's about 7.5%, 7.7% of our total expenses. In total this year, our expenses are about 14.1 million, which is about 756,000 higher than last year's budget. And that's an increase of about 5.7%. So within the appropriations, if you take it and look at it a different way, rather than the departments or functions that they're used for, we can also look at it by the kind of expenses that these are. If we look at the expenses, we see that about 41.9% of the expenses that we use are for salaries and for benefits. We also have amounts that are used for contract services. About 23% of our revenue is actually, or of our expenses are actually for our fire contract. This is a contract service, which is different than our police services, which we fund in-house. So we also have a certain number of the expenses which are for other contract services. And this would include the purple area that's up here, next slide. And that purple area is defined, is detailed in this slide. And it shows that about a portion of our contract services are for the town attorney. A portion are for parks and recreation folks. We have planning and building contract services, some public works contract services, and non-departmental. So, next slide.
Michael, could I just, just clear, no, thank you. Just to be clear, that the Public Works, that's not staffing salaries. Those are like outsourcing things that our team doesn't.
We have Miller Pacific. We have things like road slurry and stuff like that. That's paid for not as a contract, CIP contract, but in the street fund, those sorts of things.
Thank you.
Within the appropriations this year, we, we had several goals or challenges that we had with this year's budget. One is, one is inflation. Last year, inflation was a big concern. This year, our February to February numbers for inflation are about 2.4%. So that, that has worked to our benefit in some ways. In most cases, I have built a 3% increase into personnel and goods and services where that's appropriate. For our personnel, that's another big budgetary concern for us. We're, we have a lot of positions that we're recruiting for in this year, including a couple of police officers, the Climate Action Coordinator, Deputy Town Clerk, Assistant to the Town Manager, Chief Building Official. So that, that's something that we had to make sure that the budget was able to cover. Also, we have MOU negotiations for the unions, which is in the process right now. I've built a, a safety factor into the budget to, to allow for possible outcomes from our negotiations. We're also concerned about creating and improving work areas. Within capital projects, we are looking at additional funding sources for different infrastructure that we've got. Roads being the biggest one that we have a concern for, whether we're going to do bond coming down the way, or whether we're going to look for sustainable sources for being able to fund road repairs going down the way. Stormwater is something that we're looking at maybe using our ARPA funds for. And, and we're also looking at various upgrades for our fire station. The next one? So this year's budget, even though the appropriations are going up by 5.7%, the majority or biggest portion of this is going to funding our fire department, increase in our contract. Right, right now, the fire department is looking at expanding the number of people that they've got on engines. We have certain things that are happening in, in improving the dispatching and various personnel issues in the fire department having to do with the chief and some other modifications that they're doing to the way that the fire department is structured. We're looking at filling vacancies to provide services, as I mentioned before. This year's budget has about a 13.7% increase to a street maintenance budget. And we're also looking at adding some additional programs in this year, which include implementing short-term rental program, which hopefully will get off, get off to a good start early in the, in the fiscal, next fiscal year. The next, next slide? Okay. So within the, within the budget that we've got, we've got several different kind of fund groups. The first fund group, which is most of our discretionary funds, is the General Fund. It's actually, General Funds is actually made up of about seven different funds. We have our regular General Fund. We have several reserve funds, which are used for, you know, making sure that we've got a minimum amount of, of reserve set aside. So we have a dry period fund. We have several ones which take fund balance and designate them for specific purposes. That would be our Equipment Replacement Fund, Building Planning Fund, or excuse me, the Building Improvement Fund and Office Equipment Replacement Fund. And we also have, we also park a couple of our major revenue sources in here also. One is for the Retirement Fund, which is funded by a pension obligation tax passed back in the 80s. And we have our Building and Planning Fund, which is Fund IV. And so all of the revenues that come in from zoning fees and encroachment permits and street opening fees, et cetera, those go into Fund IV as revenues. And then the revenues are transferred into the regular General Fund 01 for use in the, in paying for our planning department and building official, et cetera. So in the General Fund, we're starting this year in the General Funds with about a $5.3 million balance. That's our balance that we're projecting to have at June 30 of '24, end of next month. That represents about a 41.7% fund balance, or, or balance based on comparison to the appropriations that we've got. So that fund reserve that we've got, the minimum level that we want to keep. the minimum level that we want to keep that at is about 25%. So this last year, our revenues came in better than we thought they would. We had certain taxes, sales taxes and property taxes that came in better than what we had projected. We also had certain revenues that we didn't expect that we were going to get. We got $160,000 from SB, SB one, I think it was, which was planning expenses that we had that we didn't think that we qualified for grant. And our building director went ahead and, and submitted expenses for it. And we got a check for $160,000. So these kind of revenues help push our reserve up to a 41.7%. Which it'd be nice if we just hung on to that. And, and certain parts of, of me as a finance director would love to have, be able to hang on to money that you get. But that's just not fair to the public to collect money and not use it for the purposes for which you collected it. So what we've done is made a decision, a conscious decision to say, you know, instead of hanging on to that 41% balance, let's bring it back down to the 25% and use those monies to be able to do the things that government's supposed to be doing. Fixing the roads, doing, doing the things that we've set out as, as goals to be able to do.
Point of clarity, 26%, right?
We're at 20, we're, we're projecting in this budget to stay at 26. 25 is our minimum.
I know.
But I've, I've built a buffer into that to be able to say, I'm bringing it down to 26, but I've left a little room in there. If we want to do some additional expenses, I have a little bit of wiggle room in there. I would, I, I wouldn't want to bring you a budget that just said 25% and say no to everything else that you wanted to do. I wouldn't do that to you.
Okay, and this point of clarification, it's 26.3%.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some folks that are like you and are more fiscally conservative and want to have a, you know.
Are you pointing at me?
No, it's you and me.
Okay.
Let's see, the next slide? So the second major group of funds that we've got is called special revenue funds. So we have for certain taxes that we receive money for that are, that are restricted to the kind of things they can be used for. These are called special revenues. And this includes monies that we receive for the, for a special police fund. It's called cops money that the state gives us that can be used for police purposes. We have Measure F, which is our special services, municipal services fund that collects monies that are for a parcel tax that voters passed several years ago. We have gas taxes that we receive from the state. Gas taxes are given to the town based on its population, not on number of gas stations that we've got or the amount of miles that we actually drove. It's based, it's allocated to us on a basis of population and can only be used for street type purposes. And we do a special report to the state each year, which says how we spent that money. We also have transportation funds, Measure A, AA transportation funds that we get through TAM, Measure A parks money. And the big, biggest one that we've got is the money that we received through the federal government Infrastructure Act, which is federal stimulus funds. We received about 1, 1.8 million dollars that we've been holding on to in order to do some stormwater work. So those funds are starting this year at about a $2.1 million balance. We're looking at spending about 2 million of that by, through transfers to the various funds that will be doing the work and leaving a fund balance of about 1.7 million dollars. Next one? The third major group of funds that we've got are called debt service funds. So we have four basic bond issues or debt issues that we've got. Three of those are Measure K debt service issues. These were from Measure K. Measure K was for doing road work. It was road bonds that were issued, approved back in 1999 and issued between 2000 and 2006 or thereabouts in three different tranches. Those monies were collected and and then spent on roads back in that time period. So the bonds have been refinanced several times since, one, once for each one. And we're at the very tag end of where, of what we are at for those Measure K bonds. In the budget on page 70, you don't need to look at it right now if you want to make just a note to it. But on page 70, I have a detail of all of the activity that is for our Measure K street bonds. We're looking at paying one of them off in August of 2025, which is not this next fiscal year, but one month after the, or two months after the next fiscal year starts. And then we have two of those bonds, which will paid up, be paid off in August of 2027. So in total, this year, we're going to spend about 615,000 for debt service on those street, three street bonds. Most of that is going to paying off the principal on the bonds. And some small amount will go to paying the interest. The other major piece of debt that we've got is a $9 million lease agreement bond. It's a special structure that we have, which we did a refinance of our PERS debt. We have, we have amounts that were accruing with CalPERS because CalPERS isn't always meeting their goals. And they add those amounts on as amounts that the town has to pay at some point. Many, or several years ago, what was it, about 2020, we made a conscious decision to take about 9 million of that debt, which was accruing interest at a 7%. That's what CalPERS was charging on that. And refinance it down to 3.45% interest. And so we're making, this year, our debt service on that is going to be about 714,000.
So when you're saying CalPERS, you're talking about pension?
Pension, yes, thank you. So in total, our appropriations or expenditures from this fund will be 1.3 million, which will be about slightly evenly split between the road bonds and the PERS debt. We also have in this section, not debt, but we also have what's called fiduciary funds. So we have an open space committee, which basically operates as, as a subgroup, which keeps their own, does their own fundraising. We contribute about 4,000 maximum over to this fund. If they spend 4,000, if they spend 3,000, we'll contribute 3,000 to cover those expenses. And I expected that this year they might raise $2,000. Although from this action that came before this, I'm going to imagine that their fundraising is be much, much more than $2,000.
Well, actually, just so you know, any monies that come in for the wall property are redirected directly to most.
Okay.
So that way, we don't have to transfer money into the most escrow account. So we already did that. I worked with Christine to make sure that that was the way it worked. And any of the fundraising events, the money went directly to most. They may raise other money that's not related to the wall property, but that's how we did it because we didn't think we needed to do five different steps to get money for the same purpose.
I like that idea. So finally, our last major group of funds is our capital improvement funds. When I came here, we had about seven different line items for capital improvement funds. We've managed to whittle that down to three major groups. Actually, most of our capital improvement funds are in, our activity happens within Fund 51 and Fund 53. We also have one there for storm recovery, which is if we have expenses, if the storm happened or if there was a disaster of some sort, we would accumulate those expenses in that storm recovery fund as a, a means of being able to identify them for FEMA purposes. So we don't really budget money for those. It's something where expenses might happen to it unbudgeted, but we use that to recover funds from age, other agencies.
Before you go on, just want to mention something. Going back to the open space budget, which I was looking at, we spent $12,000 last year for Upper Hawthorne. And that is not reflected in the table at the bottom. We took the money out of the open space budget. They had requested that. So we'll need to make that change at some point.
Let's see. Open space I showed as a projected, as an amount in 2023, I had a $15,000 expenditure there.
Well, I'm not sure where you're looking, but.
This is actually last year's, the budget for the current year.
Okay, well, I'm looking at the current year, which is page 75. At the bottom, you have property acquisitions. We donated 12,000 out of the open space budget. It was not Measure A money towards Upper Hawthorne and San Anselmo. And so we'll just need to make that change at some point.
I'll look at that.
Thank you. Sorry for interrupting. And I think Vice Mayor Blash has a question after you're done writing notes.
Yes. Okay. So within the.
Think Vice Mayor Blash has a question? No, she doesn't. Okay, I'm sorry, Mike.
She shook her head, I saw that.
I didn't see it, my head was down.
Okay, and so finally, within the capital improvement budget, I have a detail of the particular projects that money is going to be going to. That's the next slide. So our biggest expenditure here is going to be for, looks like Meadow Bridge. We have about $700,000, which is allocated to that. Most of that money is going to be coming from revenues that are recovered from state highway funds for that purpose. We also have other bridge projects, which account for probably another 500,000 on top of that or 600, 700,000. Within the detail here, you can see that the general fund is looking at transferring about almost $400,000 over to the capital improvement funds for the various projects that are detailed there. Measure F will be contributing about 40,000. Gas tax will be contributing about 323,000 to these projects. Our transportation fund is going to fund about 300,000 of these projects. Our Measure A park money is about 150,000. And then the stimulus money or ARPA money from Fund 25 will, will be about 90,000 of that. So with that, I open it to you for questions that you might have?
Before we do that, Christine, could you lower the, so we can see Councilmember Cutrano? There he is. Very small, but maybe what we can do is why don't we take the screen share off? Yeah, there he is. We want to see very large. Okay, questions for staff? Vice Mayor Blash? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cutrano, did you have some questions for staff? Oh, I see the finger. Okay.
Yeah, I just had one, one, and gosh, I have comments. I'm going to save them for later, but this is so good, so much good information. Quick question, coming out of the budget workshop, Michael. I know we had talked about making some slight changes to the town attorney portion of the budget. Specifically, you know, the, there's like that one item that just captures all expenses, whether general or special or litigation or any of the, you know, the different possible breakdowns. And it sounded like Best, Bestin, Krieger provides the numbers to the town broken down. And we had discussed at the budget workshop possibly capturing them in that format and incorporating them into this year's budget. I'm curious if you took a look, took a look at that or if that seemed, and for folks following along, we're talking about pages 16 and 17 in the packet or in the budget itself. But yeah, I just had a, just was curious if you were able to take a look and see if we could better incorporate the, the full picture of our, the, the town's legal costs. And it's something that the community's been asking a lot about.
Yes, thank you for bringing that up. For this document, I wasn't able to get all that information together. I have to coordinate with Christine. She's got the attorney bills. I have the, I pay from a remittance advice, so I don't have the bills themselves in, in our records. So I need to coordinate with town clerk to be able to get that information.
I think we have our town attorney waving your hand, but you need to press the button.
If I may, we can break it down into general and specialized services. One of the things that remains confidential is the actual matters, for example, whom we have a litigation matter. How much money is spent on that litigation matter should remain confidential, but it can be part of a special services heading. Same thing with personnel-related matters. I mean, they are outlined in some detail and they, they, that part of it needs to remain confidential, but they can be broken down into general and special if that's something that might help.
Okay, well, I would just request that we get that done for the next final budget so that we have it in there. Thank you, Councilmember Cutrano, for raising that. Other questions of staff? So with that, I'll open it up to public comment. And we are going to do two minutes. We're, we're going on our third meeting of the month and we are getting tired. Okay, Todd, would you like to step up to the podium?
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. Okay, so, thank you. If the mic could be adjusted, if somebody has problems with them volume. Councilman Cutrano, thank you for bringing up the complete lack of detail in the town attorney's billing, which the industry refers to as block billing. It's completely opaque, unlike the police budget, unlike the town clerk's budget, unlike the town manager's budget. There needs to be much more detail there, not just general and special. We need to know where our town is spending its money, particularly when the town spent more than 38% of higher than budgeted for town attorney's fees last year. What is going on? The public would like to know. Please provide detail. This is wrong. Also, the public should know at the budget workshop, it came out that we were already exceeding the current year's town legal budget. Why are we constantly going over our legal budget in Fairfax? Other examples of going over cost. We hired a new minutes clerk at 50% higher rates when we lost our prior minutes clerk. I need to bring up and ask the council to ask our finance director for details because the mayor and the town manager have said that we are not in debt. But the town finance director just stated that we have debt. I'm not sure if there's two different meanings of the word debt being used here. I've taken a municipal accounting course. I don't know if anyone other than the finance director here has, but I believe we have debt. And he's just stated we have debt. He's just stated we have interest service costs that we are paying on page 70.
You're out of time, thank you. And we'll take the rest of the comments. And then, Michael, you can address that with Heather. Other comments, Mark?
Mark Bell, Fairfax. I didn't see anything, a special listing for road impact fees. What that is, like how much we're getting. I don't see where those impact fees are going. So I think Michael MacIntosh has brought up that Marin Sanitary pays. So I think Michael MacIntosh has brought up that Marin sanitary pays road impact fees. We know that Victory Village has been given some type of honeymoon on paying their road impact fees that we're trying to remedy. There was someone up here at a previous meeting a while ago stating that on Bay Road, his neighbor had 30 trucks going up there for excavation. I'm sure there were road impact fees. Where are these road impact fees and how long has this been going on? Road impact fees should be directed and should have always been directed to fixing the roads. So I mean, maybe we need to go back 10, 20, 10 or 20 years to figure that out. I agree that we need an itemized legal bill for all expenditures. And I think that when we start looking at major legislation as far as ordinances or whatever, we need to have some type of budget as to what it's costing to bring those measures to the town council. For example, how much did it actually cost in consulting fees, et cetera, for the rent and just cause ordinances? And I think that that should be stated. And luckily, we have a buffer because it's probably going to be needed. If the state is in dire financial straits, which is what I've read, the state can withhold property tax money for up to three years. And then if that happens, most of you are too young to remember. The town was really struggling because we were not getting the monies that we normally would have gotten per year.
Thank you, Mark. You're out of time. Thank you. Are there any other speakers in the room? Mark, would you mind turning off the mic? Just because, just a little feedback. Are there speakers on Zoom?
There are two speakers on Zoom.
Okay.
The first speaker is Lynn, followed by Deb. Lynn, you're unmuted.
Hi, I just wanted to say, and I don't even know where to pop it in this meeting or another meeting, but the money, I don't know where the money's coming from about the trash signs that have gone up about, I mean, the street sweepers. Because as I understood at the meeting, the garbage company was going to put email notices on announcements.
Lynn, this is, this is on the budget. This is not on that. We don't have open time at special meetings. So if you could stay on the budget, appreciate that.
Okay, well, let's not spend money on more signage. It looks like Santa Claus. Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Deb. Deb, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Deborah Benson, Cascade Drive, Fairfax. Thank you for hearing me. A little bit off topic, but I want to say how appreciated I am that you have gotten rid of that fight round bell. It's much more civilized and friendlier to say you're out of time and it seems to be working just fine. So thank you for that. Regarding the budget, the stormwater, stormwater section. A couple of years ago, I met with, with Ray Berta in the park. I can't remember the reason, but he brought up the runoff from Reden Drive that goes down Park Road and then, you know, continues down into the streets and suggested that if we just did curb cuts right there to allow the stormwater that runs downhill to go into the Redwood Grove, it would not only absorb some of the water that's, that's running off in the hardscape, but it would send it, whatever was left over into the creek. And I believe there was a conversation with Lauren and Burtis about that as well. So I'm wondering if that project is included in these capital projects that you have on mine here.
Thank you, Deb. Are there any other speakers on Zoom?
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back. I think we don't, we don't detail each of the fees and how much exactly are brought in. Is that correct?
Unless something comes in as a special revenue fund item, they go into, they're called out in here. If you look at the.
How are they called out?
Budget, it actually has line item in there and you can go back through previous budgets and in the financial statements and see what we've received for road impact fees. But it, they are, they stay within the general fund and are used for our street department. We have a, we have, we have, we fund all the guys and all of their activities from, from the general fund street department. So those revenues, while I can't say that revenue went to this expense, the general fund covers the street maintenance expenses and those funds from encroachment fees are part of what the general fund receives to fund those sorts of things.
Okay, and I think there's a misunderstanding when we talk about debt. We are not in debt, but like all cities, we take loans out to fund, for example, Measure K and which was something that was back in 1999, which was a bond. So maybe, Michael, could you explain the difference between, and just going back to the other debt, which deals with us saving from 7% interest to 3.5% interest on what CalPERS, the retirement fund, was charging us. So I think there's a misunderstanding, but, Michael or Heather, I don't know who, maybe you want to start and then Michael can go.
If I may just start, so many of us may have mortgages on our homes. That's a large debt instrument. And so I think most people would find it misleading if they were to say, I'm in debt for a mortgage that I'm paying off regularly without issue on an ongoing basis. And so that's the meaning of we are, we are not in debt. We have financing instruments and the town, for many years, has managed those quite effectively with Michael being a big part of that. And I'll just turn it over to him.
I can't really add to that. It's semantics. You know, to be able to say you're in debt has an implication that you can't pay the, what, what you're, what you're in debt for. To not being able, and we are able to make our current debt service with no problem. And I think our debt service is well laid out. The interest rates are, are very low in comparison to what, what rates are right now. And I think we were, we made wise decisions to refinance 7% debt down to 3% debt and, or 3.4 or 5% debt. And, you know, the town, town is able to maintain fund balances and it's a goal of having a 25% reserve besides.
Just maybe, I don't know if you remember this, I remember when we did the CalPERS refi. At one time, we estimated what that would save us over, I think, a 20-year horizon. And at one time, I knew the number, but do you happen to know the number? Because you are the man of figures.
It, it was well over a million dollars.
Yeah, I feel like it was a million too. So that clarifies a few matters. So let's bring it back to the council. Oh, Councilmember Cutrano. You're, you're, you're fine. Okay. To, bringing it back for deliberation, there's no action on this at this point. When are we hearing this again? When is our last budget?
We are planning a special meeting for May 29th, so that's next Wednesday, same time, same place.
Well, we, we can't miss with having a meeting, it seems like every week. Okay, to, Councilmember Ackerman, I'm sorry, I'm losing it apparently. This is one, many meetings.
That's fine. Yeah, we're, we're getting close here. I just wanted to, to just add one more part to that helpful discussion of what debt means in the municipal context. It's perfectly normal. Every, every town, the county, the country, everybody has, does this, as does individuals who buy a house, buy a car. And the reason that you finance a house, the reason that you get the mortgage is because that way you can live in the house rather than waiting until 30 years later when you pay it off until you can actually use the house. And that's the same reason that a town gets, does a, a financing of that sort of, so that we can provide services to the public that is, as our town manager alluded to earlier, that's what we are, that's what we're here for and that's what we do. And so that's why we have taken those. And those were many, many years in the past that those were taken on. They've been paid down on time and they've been refinanced at very appropriate times. We're doing fine with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. And I will, I will just add that, I mean, not only we're doing fine, but part of the reason why you incur that kind of, like for the bonds, for example, so you don't have to come up with 20 million today. And so I see Vice Mayor Blash has her finger on the button.
I don't have a lot to say. I just want to say, you know, a lot of us work with other public agencies that have a smaller reserve and consider it quite good. Like I think our VPA is 20%. So it's, you know, we tend to have a pretty high reserve, which is really healthy. I just want to note that, you know, there's this misperception or something about the debt issue. You have probably seen in the paper lately, since everyone's working on their budgets, other communities. And there are a couple of communities in Marin who are seriously in deficit and that's a really different position than we're in today. And I, you know, read those articles with great concern, but that's not where we're at. And I also just want to note a couple of fun things in the budget. 150 pothills filled by our public works department, you know, amazing. I'm sure they wish they had funding to do more, but that's something else. The other one that was really interesting to me was our sidewalks program where apparently, you know, we did this, we put $170,000 last year towards shaving sidewalks and also putting out notices about our rebate program. And the number of people repairing their sidewalks went from one to nine. And I would say about four or five of those are in my neighborhood alone, which has made walking in that area, which has got a lot of heavy foot traffic, much more pleasant. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hellman.
Thank you, Michael. You do a really good job.
And I think I see a hand up and a finger up. I'm used to the finger. I'm not used to the hand.
I know, just, yeah. This is always is like one of my favorite things that we do as a council is, I, you know, I just want to say congratulations to Heather and Michael and the whole team. I know it's, it is a team effort. You all get around the table and talk through this stuff and how to prioritize what our town needs most. And it is super exciting to have a really good news budget as it was last year and the year before. I mean, we're, we're in such a good place and in large part, Heather, thanks to your leadership. So thank you so much. I think the questions that came around debt are good. It's good, good questions around, you know, what is, what kind of debt do we have? Do we have good debt or do we have debt that we should be worried about? Fortunately, it's the, the former and not the latter. And of course, it's very valuable sometimes to, to borrow in the present and get work done in the present that we know is going to be expensive, much more expensive in the future, whether it's, you know, inflationary pressure or, you know, the cost of capital being more expensive in the future as well. So sometimes it's really good to have a little bit of debt because it means that we're borrowing now to get some work done that's really needed. So glad we touched on that and also glad we touched on the whole deficit piece and the fact that we've been really lucky in recent years, in part because we have historically been running these sort of conservative budget plans. But to wind up as we close out these years with really high fund balances so that we can pull from those into our, you know, next fiscal year and try to spend some of that reserve down to our, you know, 25 or 26.3% that we're going to have this year. So just again, grateful. I feel like people always have those cliche comments about budgets being an example of our priorities and, you know, what we care about and things like that. And this budget is really reflective of, you know, all of the important plates that Town Hall has spinning all the time to try to make this, this little town work with the, the limited resources and the limited staff that we do have. And I guess the final thing I would say is, yeah, actually, I don't, I don't think I have any more comments for now, but I am looking forward, Michael, to seeing that, that little change in the town attorney stuff. And it sounds like maybe Janet's able to provide the, the sort of big picture, looking back at the last fiscal year to make it easier on your end as far as, you know, categorizing some of the spend for that department. But yeah, thank you. As always, I feel like I'm learning, you know, more and more and feeling more and more confident about all the different pieces. Municipal finance is really complicated and you do a great job of explaining it. And this document, like every community member should be reading this document to get a sense of all the cool stuff going on in town. So thanks.
Thank you. I just want to add my thanks to Heather for your leadership, for Michael and your team for all your detail and going back and forth with me with my many questions and others. And also the department heads who put a lot of work into this, as well as Christine, Town Clerk. It's a real team effort. And I want to say, having worked in the state where I was dealing with 180 million dollar budgets, I got, you know, a very different view. But working on this level of detail is, you know, it's really, I, I don't know that everybody's going to read it, chance. It's, it's good material and there's cool stuff in there. But I know every time it comes out, I read it and I laughed, I cried, it became a part of me. But I will say, thank you all, and I guess we'll see you because we'll be here next week again. And we have one more item on our agenda. And that is a consent calendar item to authorize the town manager to prepare and submit the fiscal year 24, 25 work plan to Marin County for the use of town's Measure A park funds. I just want to mention, there's one correction for the staff report on the second page. Talks about the advisory committee for Measure A. There are two town council members. There's one Fairfax open space member. And there is one Fairfax Parks and Recreation representative. So we just need to, you know, correct that, but obviously not a big deal. We don't need a staff report. It's a consent item. Did someone have? Oh, I'm sorry. I, I'm losing it. Okay. The council can approve all items on the consent calendar in one action. Thank you. Alternative, any council or staff member can remove items for separate discussion and voting. Public comments for consent calendar items are taken collectively, not item by item. During this period, speakers may address any item on the consent calendar, which is one. With each speaker allotted up to two minutes and limited to one comment session. So if there's any questions of staff, seeing none, let's move to public comment on the one consent calendar item. I see no one in the room. Is there anyone on Zoom?
There's no one on Zoom.
Okay, let's bring it back. I would love to entertain a motion.
I will move to approve the consent calendar.
A second.
All right, so that's Councilmember Ackerman. Oh my God, I need to learn how to speak between now and next week. Ackerman and Vice Mayor Blash, second. And could you do a roll call vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash. Yes. Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
All eyes.
And I want to adjourn in memory of James Ross Mason Jr., who was our own Lyndon Neal's father, who passed away a couple of weeks ago. Good news is he had a very long life, 102 years old and very loving children. And I also want to adjourn in memory of Kathy Cortez, who was a tremendous community advocate representing protected classes on a HUD committee I sit on. Kathy and I were the OGs on that committee, been on it for 11 years. Kathy and I were the OGs on that committee, being on it for 11 years. And she represented Southern Marin as well as also did at large. Amazing woman, very small in stature, but incredible big voice. I'm sorry. I miss her dearly. Thank you. We're adjourned.